Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, December 12th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Saunders. Please call the roll.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Moog?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Marsh is excused. Mr. Italiano?
Here.
Vice Chair Pap Sidero? Chair Schnack?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the documents for this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Saunders, seconded by Moog. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The documents are accepted. Are there any changes or corrections to the November 14th meeting minutes? Okay. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Moved by Pap Sidero, seconded by Martin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
I was not here, but I did watch and...
You approved?
But I'll still abstain.
Okay. So Moog abstains.
He's always watching.
And others?
Yeah. He's a brown-noser.
That is a good meeting for you to watch, too. So those meetings, those minutes are approved. And at this time, anyone in the audience who's going to speak on any of the cases on tonight's agenda, if you could stand up and raise your right hand to take the oath to tell the truth.
Do you swear affirm that any statements you give this evening will be true to the best of your knowledge?
Thank you. So I know we have to postpone the one case. Are there any other changes to the agenda? All right. Then I will move to postpone case PZ-24-73, the Wolfert PUD case, to the January 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Is there a second? Second by Pap Sidero. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That case is postponed. All right. So we'll get into the cases for tonight. And we'll start with case number two, Alton Place, Section 1, Phase 4, the final plat at Bridgeview Terrace. For the approval of that final plat, staff report.
This is the final plat for another section of Alton Place. This is for the right-of-way for Bridgeview Trace. It's shown on the screen in yellow. So it's an extension from the existing single-family to Alton Darby Road. This shows you a close-up. So this is the culvert crossing over the Hamilton Ditch and then the remainder of the prep work for that road to go in. The plat's pretty simple. So it's just the right-of-way and some associated easements. And this is an image of the current construction. In the reports, and this has gone back for all of the different sections, there are maximums on the units that can be built based on fire access. Those are standard conditions that we've, you know, added to the staff report. We're working to get confirmation from the Fire Department that secondary access is okay. And once they indicate to us that we have a secondary access, they can exceed the limits on the units as identified in the staff report. With that, staff finds that the plat's consistent with the code and the HCD concept plan for Alton Place and recommend approval with three conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I have one. Was wondering if it's... The graphics shows the right-of-way of Alton Darby changing at that location. Is that just convenience? Or is there a width change that is occurring that was in place before? Or is there a widening of that right-of-way as a result of this?
Based on the thoroughfare plan, and I'll try to show it up here on the screen, there's additional right-of-way that was granted from Alton Place as part of the development. I believe there are some other lots that are outside of the developments. So those still have the old right-of-way. If those develop at some point in the future, we would expect that right-of-way would be dedicated according to thoroughfare plan.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. McCabe, do you want to come up? No? Yes? Say hello at least. And you'll have to turn on the mic.
Yes. Hi. Dwight McCabe, 7361 Curry Road, Plain City, Ohio. Getting this about as straightforward as it gets. So I don't think there's much to say on our part. The one diagram that showed the secondary access, just to bring it back to speed, the... Yes, that one. The northern loop that's a part of that, yellow at the north, as we sit here today, all the curbs are in, all the gravel's down. It's ready for pavement. We have fingers crossed about what may happen on Saturday. And maybe it goes black on Saturday. That'd be our preference. But either way, it's a fully stabilized base. It's passed all its proof roll tests, all that stuff. The access, that little arrow that's kind of a straight line, there's a bike path that connects to the school. And with the plat that you'll see next, which is Phase 5, it illustrates that bike path is what is being used ultimately as the secondary fire access. And there's arrangement worked out between the Fire Department and the school that there's a access that goes all the way to the back of the school through the between where you see the baseball fields. That pathway exists today. And then it ties into our new pathway. So as we sit here today, that pathway is in place, at least the gravel's in place. The pathway across the school property is also gravel. And it's to remain that. And the Fire Department, that was an accommodation that the Fire Department gave. And so all that's kind of in place. I actually placed a call to the Fire Marshal today, just to have him come out there and verify that that's all good and in place. He happens to be out of town this week. So we expect that would happen next week. And that would let things continue.
Any questions?
Just to clarify, you said the bike path is going to be a gravel path? It's not going to be a paved or concrete path?
Our portion, we're going to pave it. The portion that leads through the school property is going to stay just the way it is. It was always a fire access for the Fire Department when the school was built. And it will continue to be that. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case? Any further discussion? Then we can take a motion.
Chair, I'll move that we approve case number two, PZ-24-81, Alton Place, for approval of a final plat for Bridgeview Trace with the three conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Martin. Please call the roll.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pap Sidero?
Yes.
Chair Schnack?
Yes.
Mr. Italiano?
Yes.
Mr. Moog?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right. Thank you. So that case is approved. And on to the next case we go. Case PZ-24-82, the Studio on Bridge at 5105 Cemetery Road, for approval of a sign variance. Steph?
Good evening, everyone. Here's an overview of the site. It's right at the intersection of Norwich Street and Cemetery Road, just northwest of the building we're sitting in tonight. You can see, there looks like a little raised bed there in the center of the screen. That was formerly a ground sign that was approved at this location for a reduced setback. That sign had a conforming base. This application is essentially to allow a two-post sign as opposed to a masonry base for a ground sign. There was formerly, even before that, a little two-post tattoo sign. So it was pretty similar to what was there before several, a couple of years ago, right? This is just a site plan. Shows the conformance to the previous variance approval for that. There's an image of the sign. Since the overall height is not shown, we're recommending that the applicant keep the overall height to code compliance seven feet. And we did put a note on there that if the sign is over six feet, then the Ohio Building Code requires an additional approval. So we're probably going to try to work with them and see if they want to reduce it to avoid that or if they, you know, want to keep it at that height. So staff recommendation, we find that this application is generally consistent with the spirit and intent of the code. Just north of here, in Old Hilliard, this sign would be permissible outright because two-post signs are allowed outright in Old Hilliard. So this is basically just outside of that district. It just unfortunately isn't a zoning district that does not allow it outright. So we're recommending approval with the conditions on the screen. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Is the sign lit?
Sorry?
Is the sign lit?
No, it was not proposed to be eliminated.
Anything else? Okay. Is the applicant here? Do you want to say anything? And can you say your name and address as well?
Hi. My name is Courtney Spees. And the address of my salon is 5105 Cemetery Road. And I... Thank you. I appreciate you guys taking the time to consider the two-post panel design for my studio. Given the fact that we are newly relocated to Hilliard after the last nine years in Dublin, I feel like the two-post panel, like the aesthetics of it is more specific to our brand. And I feel like it's pretty crucial right now, being like six months into the move. If there's any, you know, like, like, design tweaks, I'm happy to do whatever it takes, whether it's six feet or seven feet. And I had planned to do like seasonal landscaping inside of the bed. Hence why I didn't want to fill it in and have just like a generic one like our neighbor right next to us. So that would be like, you know, just wildflowers and whatnot. So nothing crazy.
Okay. So it sounds like you're familiar with the staff recommendations and...
Yes.
Agreeable to those?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Welcome to the community.
Thank you. I live here, so I'm happy to now have my business here.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case? All right. Then I think we can take a motion.
I'll move that we approve PZ-24-82, the Studio on Bridge, for a sign variance with the three conditions as recommended by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Italiano. Please call the roll.
Chair Schnack?
Yes.
Mr. Italiano?
Yes.
Mr. Moog?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pap Sidero?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So case three is approved.
That was a harrier one.
Come on, man. Very hairy. Anyhow.
No, he's saying, he's a pun. If you didn't get it...
We say a lot of puns around here. It's how we keep ourselves entertained.
You're probably better off not having heard it, so...
Yes.
Or understood it.
We will move on to case number four, PZ-24-84 ACC Party Rental on the northeast corner of Anson Drive and Leap Road for the approval of a lot split. Staff?
Thank you. So this is the site. You see it shaded there. It's generally the western portion of that property on the north side of Anson Drive. And this isn't the official site plan, but it's one of the early versions. But it just shows that this is about a 5.05 acre parcel. There's about 575 feet of frontage on Anson Drive, 440 feet of frontage on Leap Road. So it's a suitable lot that can be developed and meet all the requirements in that PUD. There'll be requirement to have cross-access easement there. You see that drive on the eastern end because it'll be the access drive for the adjacent property to the east as well. But the staff finds that the split is consistent with the provisions of the code in the Ansonville PUD and recommend approval with the three conditions. Do you have questions about any of those items?
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions. Is the applicant here? Want to say anything? We'll need your name and address as well.
Yeah. Brandon Sayer. Currently, we are at 3996 Columbia Street, right there in Old Hilliard. So we appreciate the opportunity. Myself and my two cousins actually bought ACC Party Rental in January 2022. So since then, we've been vastly growing. From day one, we kind of knew we needed a new location. Old Hilliard is not really suitable for us. So especially with our growth. So we actually saw this lot in 2022 and kind of held off on it, looking for other land that may work for us. But as you guys know, Hilliard is, there's only so much land available. So, and we couldn't really find a building that suited our needs. So this one has a sewer line running right down the middle, but we think we're going to be able to make it work, hopefully. And it'll really give us an opportunity to really grow. And we were excited to stay in Hilliard. I think ACC was started in Hilliard, so 26, 27 years now? 27 years. So we're excited.
We like to party in Hilliard, so...
Yep. For sure.
So will you be moving out of Old Hilliard entirely? And...
Yes. Our plan is to move out of Old Hilliard entirely. The current owner of that property, who we bought the business from, I think is starting to look to sell it. So like I said, I don't think we were... It was great when he moved in, but lately, I feel like our truck traffic and that kind of stuff, we really don't suit the area, so...
Okay. And you saw the staff report and agree to the staff's recommendations?
Yes, I did.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this case? All right. We can take a motion.
Chair, I'll move that we approve case PZ... Case number four, PZ-24-84, with the three conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Pap Sidero. Please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Moog?
Yes.
Mr. Italiano?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pap Sidero?
Yes.
Chair Schnack?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right. Case four is approved.
Party begin.
That's right. Let us move on to case number five, PZ-24-85, the Kroger Sign Package at 4656 Cemetery Road.
So as Bevan said, this is a review of a sign package for Kroger. From what was originally approved, they're looking to add an additional wall sign to their original approval. Just for a little bit of context, historically, this site, specifically the Kroger, was approved for a blue and white color palette specifically. And so there was a variance for a Starbucks sign on the building, on the southern elevation, that basically required, that allowed the green and white, you know, typical Starbucks brand colors, with the understanding that the site was never to exceed five wall signs. But basically, since this is adding an additional wall sign, we're looking to basically reconsider the Starbucks sign as approved. Get that across. So here's a look of that southern front elevation there. You see the Starbucks sign, the state liquor sign, which is kind of hard to see, but it's that southeast corner. You can kind of see it there vaguely. But that's also being proposed to change. So here's kind of a couple of shots of their rebranding. And some of the signs that you'll probably see tonight are, have already been approved. We just administratively approved some of them as minimal changes and kept within that original approval, such as this one. We have administratively approved this sign. But just kind of showing you guys what their signage is looking like. So this sign with the OHLQ is deviating from that blue and white color palette. But staff finds that with it being such a minimal change, that it's, you know, not really an issue. There's some of the specs on that. And they are showing code compliant LED illuminated channel letters. So this is the actual additional wall sign that I referenced. This is on the east canopy for the pharmacy drive-through, as you can see. Closer up there. So this is the Starbucks sign. Excuse me. This is essentially really in line with that original approval. It's the same size. They are coming back through for internal illumination on this. Originally, that was denied because at the time, when they came through, internal illumination was prohibited. It is now allowed. And then lastly, in this, they're looking to make some alterations to the existing pole sign, which is an illegally non-conforming sign on the southern entrance near Cemetery Road. It sits back in quite a ways. It's essentially a box. There's four faces on it. That's a decent shot right there of it. So they're looking to reduce the number of faces down to essentially a standard double-sided sign and keeping it basically the size of what originally was one of the faces. So with the way our code would currently measure that non-conforming sign, it'd be 320 square feet. This would reduce that down to 80 square feet. So generally, staff recommends approval with the conditions on the following slide. So as amended, the, basically that the sign permits are obtained, that lighting details are provided for all signs. And lastly, staff's recommending that the legally non-conforming pole sign is either not altered to maintain its legal non-conforming status or that it is replaced with a code compliant monument sign, subject to staff approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is really similar to the Giant Eagle signs we approved, aren't they? The ones on Britton Parkway? Because I remember they had a state liquor agency. And I thought of Starbucks as well.
Yep.
Extremely similar. Any other questions?
The legally non-conforming pole signs? I mean, we're altering it, but we're not, but it's not going to be in compliance?
Correct. Because it's still a pole sign. Those are prohibited in our code.
Why wouldn't we make it be compliant?
We're recommending that the applicant either retain its legal non-conforming status essentially...
That is our, that is our recommendation. Either not.
Bring it into compliance.
Or turn it into...
Either leave it alone or make it...
Okay. That's what I, I was reading and I wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
That's why condition number three is...
Okay.
Anything else? Is the applicant here? Come on up. And state your name and address.
Hi. My name's Rebecca Green. And my address is 74 Glenn, Worthington, Ohio.
All right. Anything you'd like to add to what the staff said?
Staff always does a great job here, so there's not as much to add. I think on the wall signs, I did send a presentation earlier, but kind of thinking, yeah, we could put it up. But you guys did a great job, so I'm not sure how much I need it. But this is all part of Kroger's rebrand. They're going from the big cursive... Oh. Thank you.
You have the power.
They're going from the big cursive Kroger look to the little grocery cart that looks a little bit like a lemon or a lime in their name. And so this is all part of this rebrand. And they want the signs to be consistent. And you're right. Just like Giant Eagle, these are big box Kroger grocery stores that have multiple uses. They have pharmacies. They have some in-store tenants like banks and Starbucks. They have drive-through pharmacies. They, so they do have a lot of different things happening. And this is just one of them like that as well. The wall signs all are part of that. So I guess we should just go through it. Our goal here, and here, they're all labeled, so you can see them. The sign A is Kroger. The sign B is a little, is a pharmacy sign. And then going left is sign I. That is the little bank sign, the US Bank sign. Going to the right of the A is the J, which is the little Starbucks sign. C is the updated liquor sign, as you know. The state liquor stores are going from the state liquor to the OHLQ, which has also an online presence. So you can see what each little store has available and within that store. It's got a web presence as well. And then we have a drive-through pharmacy that has lots of different smaller signs that have been administratively approved, like open and clearance bars and this sort of thing. And then just the identifier on that east elevation of that it's a drive-through sign. And it will substantially reduce the overall sign area on this site. The Kroger sign alone reduces it substantially almost 80, or by at least 80 square feet. Generally, these signs are smaller, 20-ish, between 20 and 30 square feet. And I, we do have signs here that are not the correct blue and white brand colors, like the Starbucks and the OHLQ signs. So again, here's the new brand with the little grocery cart. It's part of their incorporating their online grocery shopping into their overall brand. And again, here are the smaller signs that we talked about. And the proposed sign here, this one is on a raceway. I'm not sure if that's relevant, but it is a lighted sign on a raceway. These are some of the smaller signs that have already been administratively approved, just updating the general pharmacy look, the drive-through pharmacy. And then probably the one that most of you want to talk about is the ground sign. And this is that face. Basically, we're taking the existing sign that has the big cube on the top and making it more of a more standard sort of sign, just a two-face sign. And it would look a little like this. This is a very unique placement for Kroger and for probably within the city of Hilliard. It sits on a four-foot wide concrete median in between the incoming and outgoing traffic along this access point. It's got a little stone base there that is put there to protect the sign because it is sort of precariously placed on this median. It sits about 45 feet back from the right-of-way. So this is just basic pictures here. I think the city had a little nicer picture. But as you can see here, it sits pretty far back. And we have various concerns about making this sign a more typical Hilliard seven-foot monument type sign. If we put it, let's say, at the 15 feet from the right-of-way's location, which I think is the general allowance within the city, at a seven-foot height, it is potentially blocking view of, for drivers coming in and out. It is possibly providing more clutter, visually clutter, visual clutter for this particular area that's already extremely busy and full of things to see. Because it sits on this median, it really is a very unique situation. And Kroger would like to continue to keep the safety here as well. If it was a monument sign, it's at the seven foot, it possibly would just collect a lot of trash because of the in and out and the very small median space. It is a, it is a very unique sign to the city and frankly, to Kroger as a whole. They'd like to retain the sign. They'd like to update it with their current logo because it's important in a rebrand for customers to see and recognize that this is a store that's in line with all of the other Kroger stores. If it doesn't have that kind of updated logo, it often is perceived... If it doesn't have that kind of updated logo, it often is perceived as being a lesser store, maybe not providing as many services or the kinds of products that are expected by customers. So for us, it's very important that all this is branded correctly, so it has that same perceived level of, I want to say competence or, you know, services for that store. So we are asking that we be allowed to reface, or not, I guess it's not a reface, but to change this sign so that it is in line with our, our brand, our new brand. I don't know what else. The rest of this, just stuff from the, the statement support, talking about how we've tried to minimize the amount of the square footage of the signs, how we need, how important branding is for us, and how that perception by consumers is extremely important as we are part of this very tight grocery market. So I'm ready to take any questions you might have.
All right. Looks like you're still using the little animated people in the branding.
Those little animated people, yes, a little bit. So how can I, what kind of questions can I help?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about the animated people because I think like four years ago, we had a case where the animated people were on the cart caravans. And I voted against it to say consistent with the sign code, and I've kind of regretted that vote ever since. And every time I go to the grocery store, it haunts me. So I guess my question, and it might be a staff question, like where the main sign is, is that, like who owns all this?
That, the driveway is the same owner as the Kroger store. So the balance of that shopping center is on separate parcels. But the actual parcel lines include the driveway and that sign.
So you know we have that condition. Would your intention be, if we left that condition, would you, do you think you'd be keeping the sign the same? Or do you think you would change it to match the branding at that point?
So I'm trying to figure out what condition you're talking about.
So in the staff report, they have a recommendation, and it basically says, we would put, we would make the condition as we pass this, that the legally nonconforming pole sign, which is that one, that you wouldn't alter it unless you replaced it with a code compliant monument sign. So basically, you'd have to leave it the same or get a new sign.
Well, obviously, we would prefer to keep that brand constant and throughout the entire site. That's what we would like to have happen.
Monument sign could be, could use the new brand. The new logo and look.
But it's our contention that the monument sign is not an appropriate, appropriate to be placed on that tiny little median, that four-foot wide median.
So staff's position on this is if that sign gets replaced with a two-post sign with the new logo, we would recommend for that. And that sign's not visible, the current one, as you come down Cemetery, it's blocked by the trees. If you put a lower level sign, it'll be visible and that entrance will be obvious. And it can, it can be back where it currently is, or it could come a little bit further. But a two-post sign with that new logo will allow people to see under it, so it doesn't block visibility. It would fit in that median. So when we say code compliant, it would be compliant if the commission approved a two-post sign for that site without a masonry base. We think that might be more problematic. But the idea is to bring it into compliance with the height requirements and the area requirements.
Be consistent with signs that have been replaced up and down the corridor.
Yes.
Yeah, would, would the two-post sign be compliant with the sign code, or would that be a variance?
You would, if you approve it that way, then it, then it complies. But yeah, it would normally require a variance.
When you say approve it that way.
If, if the.
Would we need a condition, or it would?
Yes, you could, or you could modify this one to say, is replaced with a monument or two-post ground sign.
I'm, I do not have a drawing or anything that is a two-post ground sign that I can propose at this time. I haven't come with that information.
I think that's something that, should we approve it that way, then you could follow up.
You could work it out.
On getting approved design.
Could it keep you from having to come here more than once?
Yeah.
So for example, if Kroger decides, hey, we can take one of our signed forms, and instead of having it on that cube, put it on two poles that's not more than seven feet in height, that would be an option to do.
I'm just not, I don't have any authorization to.
Right.
Do you see what I'm saying? I'm just not authorized to, to agree to that kind of thing here today. Because I haven't heard that before. That's, I just, it's new to me.
If we had the condition, it's basically putting the option there for you already, if you guys wanted to take it.
Right. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we can modify the condition.
But it is their, it is their desire to have that, that sign at that height with the, the changes that we've proposed. That is what they're looking for.
Understood.
Get that.
Quick question for staff. So if the tenant were to change in that building, would that sign have to come down?
Ideally, yeah. And it would, basically, they'd be in the same predicament.
Okay.
Yep.
Would the square footage of the replacement sign be the same as the current sign, or what would the difference there be?
As far as the, what they're proposing tonight?
Yeah, like the square footage of that versus if?
It was, it was a substantial reduction in overall square footage. It went from 320 square feet, being the cube, down to what our code would only measure as 80 square feet. Being the back-to-back.
Any other questions?
There is, I'm assuming there's power to that post now, that that post is internally illuminated.
That I'm unsure of. Does the applicant know?
My understa, if this would be.
The, the post sign stays the way it is, or it drops. That's the two things that we're talking about. So if it drops, would we allow it to be an internally illuminated sign because there's power there?
Yeah, our, if they were to propose, say, something closer to code compliance, yes, our code would allow internal elimination. And so they could absolutely reuse the existing power.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I don't think you really answered the question as to if, if, what you would prefer, and whether it's just you or your organization, whether if we don't approve the post sign being changed, do you leave it alone, or do you go to a more conforming sign? What, what is your preference? If, if you can't have what you want, would you leave the sign alone, or would you drop it?
My understanding is that we would leave the sign alone.
Understood. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case?
Albertson's here.
Too soon. Too soon.
So as far as discussion, I would lean toward keeping the third condition, but also offering that option for the pole sign.
Two-post sign.
I think if we give them that op, that option, then Kroger can always decide that that's okay, they can look at it. And so they're no worse off, actually, they're better off than if we just, you know, leave it as it is.
And work with staff.
Right, yeah, because, exactly, and work with staff with it.
Yeah, I agree.
So should that be a fourth condition or an altered third condition?
I think it's an altered third.
Is it the same substance?
You can just add the, after monument sign, you can say, or two-post sign. You might want to, if you want to put a height limit on it right now, you know, no more than seven feet. That, that's okay, that's okay too.
Yeah, I think so.
To be consistent with the two-post sign you just approved as well.
Do you guys want a subject to staff approval? Or is that a given?
Yes.
That's a given.
I'll make this motion. I move to approve case five, PZ dash 24 dash 85, the Kroger sign package at 4656 Cemetery Road. With, I'll just read all of these conditions, with the, the following three conditions. Number one, that sign permits are obtained for each sign prior to installation. Number two, that lighting details are provided for all signs as a part of the sign permit process. And number three, that the legally nonconforming pole sign is not altered or that it is replaced with a code compliant monument sign or a two-post sign limited to seven feet, subject to staff approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Saunders. Please call the roll.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Chair Schneck?
Yes.
Mr. Moog?
Yes.
Vice Chair Papcidero?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Italiano?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
All right. So technically, that's approved, but not exactly what you wanted, but that's where it stands. We will move on to case six, PZ dash 24 dash 86, the Chase Bank at 4199 Parkway Lane, for the approval of sign variances. Go ahead.
This is review and approval of a sign package. You'll note that recently you approved the development plan for this site, so we're looking from the, the northern access point northward along Parkway Lane. This is a close-up of the parking lot that'll be redeveloped for the Chase Bank. And this is the approved plan and the architecture. What's proposed as part of the sign variance package is a multi-tenant monument sign. So this is developing as, as two individual parcels. Chase will have the, the front corner along Cemetery Road, and then the southern half will be developed at a later point in time. What's proposed is a monument sign at the corner that will include two tenant signs, one for Chase and one for an additional tenant. And this is the detail of the, the panels. For now, the, the second location will have a blank panel. This is the corner. So in general, the monument sign would be placed somewhere in the area of the pickup that you can see in the parking lot there. They're also proposing two wall signs. This is on, on a corner, so they're permitted to do two wall signs. So one for the east elevation facing Parkway Drive, and then also one for the frontage along Cemetery Road, which is actually the, the rear side of the bank. They're going to do a code compliant wall, or window sign above the main entrance. And you can see the details for the individual channel letters with white lettering and the blue Chase logo. The ATM kiosk, which is along the railroad track, also has a canopy that will include a Chase logo to help direct people into the, the right direction to go through the ATM. They're also asking for a variance to the temporary development signs. The code allows 32 square feet for one sign. Because they're on the corner, they're requesting two of those, one for each frontage. So staff recommends approval. We find that the sign package as amended is generally consistent. The proposed variances will not be detrimental to the surrounding area, and recommend approval with the four conditions. The one modification from the staff report, we're recommending that the multi-tenant panel utilizes a maximum of four colors. So if this were a, a single tenant sign, code would allow four colors. We're requesting a condition that would allow that as well in total for both tenants.
So when you're talking about the second tenant, is there something more than the Chase Bank, or this would be a building to the south potentially?
Go back to the site plan, I can show you. So the, the southern half of the site, so this original parcel includes portions to the south. They recently came through the commission, got a lot split and a final development, or development plan approval. So the, the lot is being split in half. So there's a, a second portion of the, the original site that'll be developed, and the intent is to have a tenant panel to represent that portion of the, the full site that's being developed.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can you, can you help me with the colored numbers again? So are we saying that the future tenant would be able to use the same white and blue plus one other color? Or you're saying that the future tenant could use a total of three different colors because it has the same background?
So by, by code, the background counts as one color, so that gray would be one, the white lettering would be a second, the Chase logo, that blue would be a third. The intent would be for the future tenant to be able to use white lettering and, and one other color as well.
Or they could use the blue in addition to that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Is the applicant here? Come on up. And say your name and address.
My name is Alyssa Sherry, 4815 Crispin Road, Mount Sterling, Ohio.
Okay. What would you like to add to the staff report?
I don't think I have anything to add at this moment. I do have a couple of questions about the staff recommendations. For the access of the easement, will requirements be shared to what that needs to look like?
It is my understanding that the city engineer has been working with Chase or the representatives on an access easement. Basically, it's just an easement area to be able, for that second tenant to be able to access that sign, since it's technically on the, the Chase property. Just for maintenance, to install the tenant panel, to take care of general maintenance on it.
Is the site access split between the two parcels, or is it only on the Chase Bank's two parcel?
No, it is, it's shared access, so that one curb cut provides access to both Chase and to the property that'll be split off to the south.
So will there be requirements of how wide, what material the access needs to be? Will that be given?
That's to be determined between the city engineer and Chase representatives.
Okay. And then for the setback on the, we propose two-foot setback from the right-of-way just because of how this, this plot is? There's the awkward, super-high hill. Are we allowed to do the two-foot setback? Has that been proposed, allowed? Is that what I'm understanding?
Our understanding is that's what they're proposing. We're recommending approval of that. The condition referencing the 15-foot setback has to do with the temporary development signs, the banners. And so because we don't have a construction plan yet, per se, we're recommending that condition so that if, wherever that construction fencing goes, you know, they can put the banner on that. If, for whatever reason, they don't want to put it on the fencing, it needs to meet the 15-foot setback.
Okay. Anything else from you?
So the proposed monument that's two-foot setback from the right-of-way, it is being recommended that it's approved?
Correct. That's the staff recommendation.
Okay. Just, I'm confirming. Thank you very much.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for the applicant, or the city, or maybe no one here knows. Is this, and this is kind of unrelated to the case, but is the Chase Bank an old Hilliard going away, and this is like the replacement?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Just wanted to know. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to comment on this case? All right, then we can take a motion if there's no further discussion.
Motion, approve case six, PZ 24 86, the Chase Bank, assigned variance with the four staff recommendations, as in our packet.
Thank you. Is?
Sorry.
Yes, do you want the conditions in the packet or on the screen?
Oh, on the screen, I'm sorry. I, I modify my.
We will.
Proposals, as amended, on the screen. Thank you.
Sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Papcidero. Please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Moog?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Italiano?
Yes.
Vice Chair Papcidero?
Yes.
Chair Schneck?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
All right, that case is approved. Onto our final case of 2024. PZ dash 20, PZ dash 24 dash 87, the Latham Park Apartments at the northwest corner of Sayo D'Arvi Road and Latham Park Boulevard, for the approval of a sign variance. Staff.
This is another request for signage. So we're looking at the entrance to the apartment complex adjacent to the Hilliard Grab and Go. You can see a close-up of that. To the left, Latham Park Drive, you can actually see the existing pillars and sign face there in the foreground on this side of Latham Park Drive. Is noted in the staff report, this is a fairly complicated site that we're dealing with on this. It's a little triangular parcel that's part of the larger access to the apartment complex. The proposed sign requires a variance for the setback from 15 feet to 13.5 feet, as shown on the screen. And that gives you a kind of an overview of where it's located with respect to the apartment complex. And that gives you a kind of an overview of where it's located with respect to the apartment complex. On the other side of the private drive back to the complex, there is a larger development sign. So it's kind of a service building that has the square at Latham Park on three sides. Originally, this has had past variances that were approved to allow a temporary sign. So this is a temporary sign from a couple of iterations ago. And we noted the history in your report. This is the current sign that was out there. So that was approved as a temporary subdivision sign that expired in November. And once that expiration date arrived, the applicant submitted to the commission here for, for the sign variance that you're hearing tonight. So what is proposed is to keep the, the same pillars, just switch out the sign face in that same location. And as far as the, the site, there are some issues at play here. One of the pillars was actually installed within a sanitary easement. You can see on the screen, the, the gray is the existing sanitary easement. Talked with the city engineer. The line in that location is, I think, at a depth of approximately sixteen feet. So the pillar itself, as it's currently sitting, is not impacting the, the line. We talked about the issue of, you know, making them remove a pillar and push it back further. However, there is a, a gas line easement as shown in the pink as well. So the sign is kind of trapped in the middle of the, the two easements. And this shows you the approved sanitary sewer plans. So you can see, you know, the, the notations regarding the gas easement. So based on that, we're not recommending pulling that front pillar and making them put it back further. So this shows you the existing location where it's, where it's currently at, out in the field. Based on that, the sign will coordinate with the surrounding architecture. It's a sign that's common to other similar apartment developments. And while not in an optimal location, provides the best option given the easements and, and other complications of the site. With that, we would recommend conditions as shown on the screen. And of note, in your report, this is very similar in nature to the, the sign on Parkway Drive that we've, you know, heard a few months back where there was an existing sign that was over a sanitary easement. So we have a lot of the same conditions with this that with this, with this approval, the property owner is responsible for any damage that occurs to the sign as part of maintenance to any of those easements if it's located within that and it's damaged. Also, if in the future at some point it, it is removed because of maintenance to the easements, that the sign goes away. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Is the sign as proposed already there or, okay, it is?
The, the pillars are there, the sign face is different.
So the, the sign.
I can go back and show you what is there today. This is what's currently there. And then this is what's being proposed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
It's not illuminated?
No illumination.
And to clarify, this will be a temporary sign again or is this a permanent installation?
They're, I believe they're asking for this to be a permanent installation for the apartments.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Come on up. And if you could say your name and address as well.
Steve Turner, three five three five Fisher Boulevard, suite two ten. Good evening, John.
We'll start calling you that in all of our meetings now. Is there anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
The maintenance required to that sewer line, which I think is deeper than eighteen feet, if it is ever required, I'll happily bulldoze the sign, get it out of the way. It's an unlikely occurrence. Second, the sign is important to the operation of the apartments because the apartments are set so far back from, from the, from the main entrance that it's, frankly, it's just necessary to continue.
Okay, so it sounds like you agree to all the staff recommendations?
I do.
Okay, any questions? Other questions? No, all right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to comment on this case? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion or discuss anything?
I can make a motion. That the commission approves case number seven, PZ two four dash eight seven, Latham Park Apartments with the five considerations, conditions listed on the screen.
Thank you, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Italiano. Please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Italiano?
Yes.
Mr. Moog?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pap Sidero?
Yes.
Chair Schneck?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
All right, that case is approved and that completes all of our cases. Are there any discussion items?
Wasn't sure if this would be interesting, interesting meeting, but there were signs.
There were signs, there were many signs. Okay, well, we got through another year of planning and zoning commission meetings and another year of puns. I'm not going to comment on that one, but thank you all, happy holidays. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Saunders, seconded by?
Aye.
Moog, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.